Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his law, where liberty and justice are.
Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Jean-François?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Massey, Ebsen, President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval minutes.
Tonight, we have the council meeting minutes from September 21st, 2021.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, for the good of the city, we have a presentation by RBT.
In the mindset of keeping everything brief, we're just going to go over some, some quick points from the financial statement audit for 2020. The city did receive a clean opinion, which is what the ultimate goal is, so good job there for everybody. On page two of the packet, we kind of give you a brief summary of what the financial statements contain. So there's government-wide, and there's governmental fund level. So the governmental fund level of the financial statements are what are actually recorded on the books of the city. And then the government-wide is a representation of liabilities that the city could incur, which are based on valuations such as your pension, OPEB, LOSEP, things like that. So they want the readers to know about that information, but it's not actually recorded on the books of the city. So Donna's going to give you a brief little synopsis about those statements.
So I'm just going to talk about the government-wide statements first, which contain everything, liabilities to the end of time, really. So your assets totally increased, and a lot of that was due to capital projects that the city's doing. And your liabilities increased due to some debt, and long-term liabilities increased due to the OPEB and the pension actuarial calculations. So nothing you guys can control. Page four, the change in net position for the year. On government-wide, your revenues actually were fairly consistent, but your, and your expenses just increased. Again, those were due to increased benefit costs for the actuarial calculations. Page five are your government funds. These are the funds that you're used to looking at. A lot of thing, the revenue increase, or the, excuse me, the assets increased over 13 million, and your liabilities also increased. Most of that change was in the capital projects fund because you have new cash and new borrowings, so you have new debt. Page six, these are the funds again, the revenues, expenses for the year. Revenues decreased mainly because of COVID restrictions, and we just want to point out that the city was awarded and spent federal funds of $2.8 million this year. That was all reported in the single audit that we do to the federal government. And the capital projects expended about 14 million, which was a $4 million increase. That, again, has to do with capital projects. I'm going to give it back to Shannon.
Okay, so on page seven, there's just some other quick highlights. So GAZB issued a new statement, which the city did adopt for 2020, that's GAZB 84. Essentially, your trust and agency fund no longer exists. Now it's called the custodial fund. They changed the requirements for it to be held in that fund. So the city ended up moving $68,000 from trust and agency over to the general fund. It's just where the, where the transactions are to be recorded from this point forward. There will be a new standard, GAZB 87, for fiscal year-end '22. For leases, this is across the board, this isn't just affecting governments. Essentially, what it boils down to is you'll have a new asset and a new liability. Why they did that, I just, nobody seems to understand it, but they did it. So in '22, you'll see some new, some new line items on the financial statements. Just a subsequent event, in August of 2021, the city did convert some bands, short-term debt, to bonds, so that'll save the city on their annual cost to repay these obligations. So, and then the other big highlight is the ARPA fund. So the city received $11.3 million, and the first half was received in July. The second half is scheduled in '22, and the city is currently working on what they intend to do with those funds. On page eight and page nine, these are just required communications that we have to do to the council. I'd just like to point out that all the audit adjustments that were proposed based on the audit were given to the city and accepted and posted in the books. And then finally, we did not find any material weaknesses based on our audit. So overall, good job for the city. And that concludes our brief presentation.
Any council member have any questions?
I just had one question, thank you. So obviously, we have a lot of DRI money. Is that always reflected in capital projects, or is it reflected in state aid? Or how, how is that money reflected in a, in a document like this?
That money comes in not as state aid, it's actually miscellaneous aid that comes in, miscellaneous revenue in the capital projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Kleiner?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention, you point out a few deficiencies, suggestions for improvements, and they're the same as last year's. None of them are material weaknesses, so they never rise to that. They're just some procedural suggestions, and I'm glad to see on the report that the, our treasurer and other people have reached out to you, and you're going to be working with them to try and improve that, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
John, going back, do we have any communications?
Not, nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anybody else like to address the council? Please step forward.
Hi. Actually, I was hoping the mayor would be here. Anyway, got a, hello, my name is Juana Yala, and I'm a longtime city resident of living in Ward Four, in the Fourth Ward. I'm here to correct the mayor's incorrect assumptions about the libertarians that attended the meeting on June 15th and our supposed role in collecting signatures to oppose local law number one, which bans cannabis in dispensaries and cafes within the city limits. First thing I need to address is the characterization by the mayor that Daniel, that Daniel Donnelly and Pietro Giacaracci were outsiders and should have no say in the public meetings. First, Daniel is a judicial representative of District Nine of the Libertarian Party, which covers Orange County. While Pietro lives in Newburgh, not Long Island, and is the chairperson of the Orange County Libertarian Party, they were here to represent the libertarians and the freedom supporting residents of Middletown. Secondly, I rewatched the June 15 meeting on Channel 20, and not once did Daniel, Pietro, or myself beat our chest and say that we were going to the public to get the necessary signatures to get on, on this year's ballot. We were focused on getting the council to do the right thing. The actual, the actual idea of putting this issue on the ballot was floated by Alderman Kleiner, who recommended the council vote on the law in the next meeting. Otherwise, the public wouldn't have a fair chance to organize and collect the required signatures by August 1st. In fact, he was right. The council ignored his advice and waited till July 20th to opt out, which would only give us 10 days to collect about 1,000 signatures. That's not a practical fight for us right now, as we're focused on the 2021 election. But I want to personally promise that I and Orange County Libertarian Party will start a process to collect those signatures for 2022. Since I only have three minutes, I won't waste the time dismantling every talking point brought up by the mayor in these past meetings. However, I do challenge the mayor to have a serious debate with myself, or better yet, a qualified expert like Colleen Hughes, a top cannabis expert, who was at attendance of that June 15 meeting and gave the best three-minute speech of that, of that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joel Sierra, Orange County legislator, District 20 for the city of Middletown. The legislature is working on their 2022 county budget. The county exec presented it to the legislature. It's just over $827 million, so the next few weeks, we'll be balancing out the budget. There is no tax increase as of now, we don't foresee any. Sales tax numbers are projected to look well, hopefully, the holiday season will be well, and the turnout numbers will be expectedly high. Other than that, early voting starts Saturday. You guys have a early polling location here in the city of Middletown, as you all are aware. It's at 70 West Main Street for the public, and all of the times are set on the city and county websites. Other than that, if that's all you have, thank you for having me, and good luck in this year's election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on to department heads, economic development.
Nothing this evening, unless anybody.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Fire chief?
Nothing this evening.
Any question for the fire chief? City treasurer?
Hi.
Don't listen to him.
I just wanted to thank RBT for coming. I handled the tail end of the audit with them, but they were very professional, and we are aware, Alderman Kleiner, of the suggestions they gave, and the department is already working on trying to get those corrected. And that's all I have.
Awesome. Any question from Kelly? Thank you, Kelly.
Okay.
Police chief?
Nothing this evening either.
Wow. Any question for the police chief? All right. City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
All right, there we go. Public hearings and grievances.
Yeah, tonight, we have a public hearing for an application for New York State CDBG CV cares funds for the ONW building restoration project. I'll read the public hearing notice. City of Middletown, I have a notice of public hearing. The city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on October 19th, 8:00 PM, in the common council chambers of City Hall, 16 James Street, second floor, Middletown, New York, for the purpose of hearing public comments on the city of Middletown's community development needs and to discuss the possible submission of a community development block grant application for the 2020 program year. The CDGB program was administered by the New York State Office of Community Renewal, OCR, and will make available to eligible local governments approximately $60 million for the 2020 program year for housing, economic development, public facilities, public infrastructure, and planning activities with the principal purpose of benefiting low, moderate-income persons. The hearing will provide further information about the CDBG program and will allow for citizen participation in the development of the proposed grant application. Comments on the CDBG program or proposed projects will be received at this time. The hearing is being conducted pursuant to Section 570.486, Subpart 1, a DCFR, and in compliance with the recommend, requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. The common council chambers are accessible to persons with disabilities. If special accommodations are needed for persons with disabilities, those will, the hearing impairments of those in need of translation from English, those individuals should contact the Office of Community Development at least one week in advance of the hearing date to allow for necessary arrangements. Written comments can also be submitted to Maria Bruni at comdevelop@middletown-ny.com until October 19th, 2021, at 4:00 PM. For additional information, please contact OECD at 845-346-4170. This is Joseph DiStefano, Mayor, Maria Bruni, Director of OECD. The city of Middletown is an equal opportunity employer. This was also posted on the website of the city of Middletown and also in the Times Herald Record.
Okay, if it's time, the public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Maria Bruni, Economic Development. I'm here to speak about the application. The mayor has been working closely with Council President Rodriguez, council members, state officials, and ABCD to apply for funds to rescue the ONW. The city, through the Office of Economic and Community Development, has prepared an application to be submitted to New York State Homes and Community Renewal. The application has been posted on the Office of Economic and Community Development webpage for review and for public comments. The city is requesting funds through New York State Homes and Community Renewals, CDBG cares program, to rehabilitate and restore the New York, Ontario, and Western Middletown train station, known as ONW. It's located at the intersection of Lau and Wickham Avenue in Middletown. Funds will be used for both exterior and interior renovations, along with the costs associated with ABCD's build-out. We are requesting $4.1 million in this application to fund these associated costs. The project will address several needs in the city of Middletown, specifically access to childcare, affordable housing, and neighborhood blight. We are currently working with Agribusiness Child Development, ABCD, to move their programs from their current location to the ONW building. ABCD has expressed interest in utilizing the first floor for their education programs and some of the second floor for office space. An outdoor play space will also be created for the children. Currently, ABCD at Middletown has two Head Start programs. The Region Two Early Head Start Grant serves 40 center-based children ages birth to three years old, 12 prenatal moms, and eight home-based children, birth to three as well. The second program is funded with migrant and seasonal Head Start funds and serves 45 children ages three to five, whose parents work in agriculture and/or agricultural-related businesses. Before the COVID-19 pandemic, ABCD was able to provide transportation for its Head Start programs. Unfortunately, lack of funding became an issue as exponentially increasingly costs, such as transportation, placed ABCD in an unattainable fiscal position. In response to these fiscal challenges and compounded by COVID-19-related social distancing program, protocols, and New York State Office of Children and Family Service mandates requiring greater number of bus aids needed per bus, it made fiscally impossible to continue providing transportation to services for ABCD families. The majority of families they serve identify as Hispanic and are mainly Spanish-speaking household. Many of these families do not have access to vehicle. However, the ONW building is within walking distance for 60% of the families ABCD serves. The size of the building, walking distance for the families they serve, and the ability to retrofit the interior for their needs is attractive to ABCD. While we hope that COVID-19 is not around forever, ABCD will be able to safely run their programs while maintaining state health guidelines, and will even be able to expand upon current programs. The use of the building and the community it serves makes the ONW station an ideal project for this neighborhood. The need for more affordable childcare has been great even before COVID-19 pandemic, especially for the population served by ABCD. This project will increase the accessibility of ABCD programs and allow for expansion of their programs. The third floor of the building will be utilized, the city's on-track-to-homeownership program, which will create eight units of affordable rental housing. The need for affordable rental units and a pathway to homeownership is great in the city of Middletown. The on-track program will offer affordable rentals that will allow residents to start saving money while going through a homebuyer education course, allowing them to eventually buy a house in Middletown through the city's homebuyer program. The remainder of the second-floor space not allotted to ABC will be used as community meeting resource spaces. Community rooms will be available for nonprofits and other community groups to hold meetings, events, and other programs geared toward the communities, such as job, job training, and workshops. While the city has received some funding for this project from other sources, the ever-increasing cost of construction, construction labor and materials make CDBG CV funds necessary for the rehabilitation of both the exterior and interior of the building. The project will save, will save a listed historic structure while providing necessary services that will be accessible to local community. Again, this public hearing is for us to be able to apply for $4.1 million to New York State Homes and Community Renewals Project Program, the CDBG cares program, to rehabilitate, and the funds to be used for ABCD's build-out in the ONW. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. Any member from the public have any questions or comments? Any council members have any comments? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you, Maria, and the mayor, and everyone involved for your vision on this. It's been so important to Middletown for so long to, to get a project moving that involved the ONW, and this is, this is a great one, so I just wish you all the success in the world in moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Johnson?
Just a quick question to Maria, so as far as the Head Start populations, where exactly are they housed now? Are they all in one place, or are they spread throughout the county?
Well, they're housed in the Academy Avenue building.
The whole program is there?
Those two programs, yeah, and that program wants to move to the ONW.
So when you talk about agricultural workers, they meet at that building, and then they're transported to, to Pun Island or wherever they have to go? Or how does that work?
Their children, they, they bring their children there for daycare.
And then does the program provide transportation for them to get where they have to go to work, or not necessarily?
I'm not 100% sure. The transportation had to do with busing the kids to the program.
I see. Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Eileen, do we have anybody online?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green, all in favor to close?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. Okay. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Tobin?
I'd like to congratulate the county department for the clean audit. They squeaked clean books, it's good to see that happens year after year. The ABCW project, I think, is a win-win. I think as advocates and representatives are always looking for this win-win, and this is definitely one. It's good for ABCD, it's good for ONW, it's good for the city, and so that's all I have to say.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, RBT, as always, for coming and giving us the layman's terms version of the audit, or, you know, one nice, short, brief overview. We appreciate it, and congratulations to everyone involved. It's always nice to hear that we have a cooperative and clean audit and staff here, so thank you very much for that. Don't forget, early voting does start. I know legislator Sierra touched on that, but also, don't forget, there are propositions on the back of the ballot, so I believe there are six on there, so just don't forget to turn over the ballot, and thank you very much.
Alderman Johnson?
I agree with my colleagues, thank you very much.
Alderman Casoun?
I'm just having a quick reminder for the third ward meeting, which will take place a week from tonight, on Tuesday. We are holding it, weather permitting, at the Maple Hill Bobbi's Pavilion. We've enjoyed the growth of the meeting, we were at like 20 people last month, so it's exciting. It's nice to see more and more neighbors come out, we get together, it's always a good time in Ward Three, so we hope everyone will come out. We're aiming to start at 6:00 PM this month in lieu of lighting and temperatures. That's all.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. We had a Parks and Rec Commission meeting last Wednesday, it was Ray Lynn's first meeting, and she did an excellent job, so we're, we're in good hands, moving right along. We had some issues at our constituents' meeting, and I'm going to wait till the mayor and the commissioner are, are back before I get into those. And the warming station, there are more training sessions, if you're inclined to volunteer. It's going to be warm the next couple days, but it's going to be cold soon. So Thursday, October 21st, at 7:00 PM, that's at 8 to 10 Mulberry Street, there'll be a training. And Tuesday, October 26th, there's another training session, so if you're inclined at all to help, there are two-hour periods, overnight periods and such, that, that any volunteers are much appreciated. And voting, because early voting starts on Saturday, I wanted to hit on that, too. All our early voting is at the senior center at 70 West Main Street, and then on the website for the regular voting, and we'll have our meeting on November 1st. We moved it to Monday, because the voting is on Tuesday, November 2nd. On the website, if you want to plan ahead, there is a link that shows you, depending on which ward you live in and which district in that ward, you can find exactly where you vote. It is a lot of different places, so, you know, be, be informed, so you don't have to go one place and then go to another. And lastly, I do want to thank all the folks who make our elections possible, all the poll workers, all the professional people, everyone who makes voting, which is so important to our democracy, that makes it possible, and just because you have a pathological narcissist who could never accept defeat, even, even if he lost 1,000 to one, doesn't mean that there was any issue with the election, and going forward, we really do appreciate the people who help us conduct the elections, there's nothing more important to a democratic system of government, which we hope we will continue to have. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François?
Yes, good evening. It's always great to see all first, we spot a sitting front row, police chief and the fire chief. I want to thank you guys for what you do, keeping our community safe, and also county legislature, Joel Sierra, like when you attend our meetings, you always have some good news for us, and I want to wish you luck on your reelection this year, I think you're going to do just fine. Thank you.
Alderman Burr?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
Yeah, we have resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, to allow limited residential usage of the first floor of a commercial mixed-use building in the DMU downtown mixed-use zoning district.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, to authorize the DPW vehicles be declared surplus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, to authorize the DPW vehicles be declared surplus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Casoun, to authorize the mayor to sign as sole signatory any and all necessary documents requiring pertaining to the city's application for grant funds through the New York State Homes and Community Renewal Funding for $4.1 million for the ONW project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Casoun, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to approve salary increases for the new incoming superintendent of recreation and the assistant superintendent of recreation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green, discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing the implementation and funding for the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state marshandalee program aid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Casoun, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
President Rodriguez? Resolution passes. That was all for New Business.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited, the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Roll.
Graham Cassoun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez? Resolution passes.
Move by German?